I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Unsaka School Committee. It's 7:04 PM on October 10th. I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, Chairman SEAL. Yes. Vice Chair Borje.
Yes.
Mr. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes.
We are again in open session. I will also make a motion to seal the closed session minutes. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, Chairman SEAL. Yes. Vice Chair Borje.
Yes.
Mr. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez. So, in closed session, we voted to reimburse the costs of summer school credit recovery e-learning. If everyone, please stand for a moment. Let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. It stands for God, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, Chairman SEAL. Here. Vice Chair Borje.
Here.
Mr. Lehman.
Here.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Here.
We are all present. First, I want the agenda to go to welfare. If anyone would like to speak under good welfare, please step up to the microphone, state your name and either address or affiliation for the record.
Good evening. Nicole Woodwell, Unsaka Middle School Band Director. I wanted to congratulate the middle school band for achieving feats that we did not know what to do. In two rehearsals, they never heard their music, and marched the entire parade, and they were very excited and they made some dance, and nobody passed out. So, I want to take congratulations for that. Thank you for the shirts that you got for them. Glad you're getting them still, but thank you. The only concern I have is, we put in for that, is the band's ticket came through and it was written wrong, and I wrote it in the correct wording at the bottom because it's actually written for an local person. And so, I went for the children and I marched them all at one time because I love them. But going forward, if I was told there'd be four segments, two chorus and two band, and if there are not four segments, there will be no concerts, and that breaks my heart. So, I'm coming to just talk to you and just ask you if you would please, I know you're in this election season and all that's coming up, but without this department, it has four, we have nothing, and I don't want that to happen. So, that is my big congratulations, though. Same old one.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, no one? Dr. McGee, recognition and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, September 29th, Unsaka Education Department held its third annual summer reading celebration at Hamlin Middle School for elementary students across the district. All Unsaka elementary school students who completed three summer reading assignments were invited to this celebration that included games and activities, pre-book distribution and lunch. Total of 587 students and parents attended and were looking forward to next year's celebration. On Wednesday, October 3rd, Governor Gina Raimondo visited the Lio-Saboy Elementary School where she issued a rhetorical proclamation calling October 3rd, 2018 recess day in the state of Rhode Island. Many dignitaries attended the celebration. The governor chose Unsaka to issue this proclamation in part due to the successful recess rocks program that has been implemented at all of our elementary schools, as well as the importance placed on educating children academically, physically, socially, emotionally. And finally, on behalf of the Unsaka Education Department, I would like to thank Ermo Fisher Scientific for their generous donation of backpacks and school supplies and box tops to our students. In addition, they donated money for students with outstanding lunch accounts. Their kind contribution helps to ensure that our students are equipped with the necessary supplies to be successful in school. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does any school committee member wish to comment on the recognition and announcements? Hearing, none. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file recognitions and announcements. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Okay, so you're promising, aye, aye, aye. Opposed with the ayes. Have it. Onto the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve this September 26, 2018 open session minutes. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Are there any corrections? Hearing, none. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, Chairman SEAL. Yes. Vice Chair Borje.
Yes.
Mr. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And the open session minutes from September 26, 2018 are approved. Onto the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Does any committee member wish to speak to any individual item? I will pull out personnel actions. All right. By saying "no", there's actually a school number on there. By saying "no", there's actually a school number on there. All right, let's get to that. All right, so my understanding is that we need to pull a name from appointments? And it is the third name down on the first page. All right, so I'll make a motion to amend the certified position, positions are moving the third name down. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, the amendment. Chairman SEAL. Yes. Vice Chair Borje.
Yes.
Mr. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes.
All right, the amendment has passed. Any discussion on the consent agenda has amended? Your time has passed. I'll shoot. Don't get anyone.
I just have a question with homeschooling. What we're getting now is, is this the right report that's recommended where we have grades on the students and the programs? I guess we have, I don't know what kind of information we're looking at.
So, we can have listened to them, they have had applications and I go through those application process and I've seen them work and I really agree with them.
Okay.
So, these are, you know, that I, that, you know, I can deal with everything with my own hands. So, you're just actually approving one of them.
Okay. We are endorsing what you have.
Yeah, because frankly, I can't prove that we do because I don't have the expertise to do that. You do, so why are you even endorsing? I understand. I'm fine.
Vice Chair Borje, I'd like to remind you that it is now October. The time to complain about this, not complain, to address this in detail usually occurs in two meetings in September.
Mr. Chairman, it has made no difference. When I have addressed this, I'm still back from the height at the same point.
Any others?
No, sir. I'm fine.
All right. Any further discussion of the consent agenda has amended? Here we go. Dr. McGee Roehlbaum, Chairman SEAL. Yes. Vice Chair Borje.
Yes.
Mr. Lehman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We have no communications, no school committee reports, no conferences and discussions, no unfinished business. Onto new business. All right, I will make a motion for discussion and approval of the 1908 ceiling replacement project. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Borje. So, these were not submitted in time to make it into the package. But is, okay, these are in paper copies? Okay, all right. So, these are not amended or not being found on the license. All right, don't. It doesn't amend, what's already in that? It's just a paper copy. No, I thought it was. All right, so. Dr. McGee, I would like to walk us through the.
Is there enough?
No, but. Basically, mark and paste it. Okay, all right. Maybe you need to do it after all.
So, I can just summarize, I guess, the information as one in your packet and two was distributed electronically.
Yeah.
There were two bids received for the ceiling replacement replacement project at the Unsaka area for a technical center yesterday. There's a bid tabulation form that was submitted electronically and also in your packets. So, you can see what the two bids were and then what the options were with different There's also, there was a de-scope meeting that was held earlier today. The tabulations of those are included in your packet and were submitted electronically. And just a letter summarizing the evaluation of the two bids. So, both bidders in our experience are, have the experience and expertise required to complete the project on time. So, then it would just be up to the school committee as to any alternates that they would want to accept for either time or on the run.
Where were the alternates defined?
They're defined in the specifications and in the drawings, but I can tell you the, I can summarize the difference for you. So, alternate number one, which both contractors had as a, as no cost change, had to do with phasing, and it was requested that the shop areas be turned over prior to the entire building. So, both contractors said under option one, where they would turn the shops over first and then proceed with the remainder of the demolition and construction, there would be a no cost change, assuming that option, or alternate two was a similar option where they would turn the shops over, but their work hours would be restricted to either before, after school or weekends and no work while the building was occupied by students. So, you can see there was a little bit of a cost differential both contractors carried for that. Then option three had to do with altering some light fixtures in some ceilings that have a suspended ceiling system that would be taken out, and then the light fixtures would just be modified to enhance that area. And alternate four was to replace the light fixtures in the shop areas of just the areas where they have suspended ceilings now, and ceilings would come out and no ceiling would be put back in. It'd just be exposed structure.
Yes, still have one.
Question on lighting. Is there a number of national grid and that you've funded the lighting proportion that the contractor probably provides for the room or something like that? That could be a little.
That's something that we can certainly look into. We have participated in a national grid historically at some other schools. National grid did assist with some lighting there, so that's something that we can certainly look into, taking advantage of, absolutely. And so, does, so the base bid with alternate one, is the students remain out of the career intact for the entire duration? Yes.
Yes, the price for the base bid and alternate one were the same, so we just put them in the same column for both contractors.
Okay, so what's the difference between the base bid and alternate one? So, the base bid is the students are removed the entire time, and alternate one is they get phasing back in?
Yes, alternate, the base bid did not include any phasing. They would just have the whole building available 24/7.
Yeah.
Alternate one, they would ask to complete certain areas first and turn those over and then keep working in the remainder of the building.
And there was no.
There was no cost differential from either contractor.
Okay, so we know when students would be able to start re-entering the building and the phased areas that are completed first?
One contractor had said about two and a half weeks from the time that they're authorized to proceed or mobilized on the site. So, there'd be a few, maybe half a week or so for them to mobilize, so probably approximately about three weeks from when they're authorized to proceed.
Will contracts in the same time be mobilized?
Basically, if you look, there is a, the calendar dates are provided in the bid tabulation, and then it was further elaborated on in the de-scoping. Both contractors confirmed that they could meet the timeline. That was in the project scope, which was the end of December, basically. But one contractor had advised that both could turn it over, the shop areas over first. One would turn the shop areas off, but would have completed all the demolition at the time that they turned those over. So, the remainder of the work in the building would just be new work as far as ceilings, flooring, that kind of thing. So, that was pretty much one of the only differentials between the two bids, is how they were going to perform the demolition work.
Which contractor?
That was Morton.
And then what was alternate two again?
Alternate two referred to phasing, but we weren't sure if you wanted to have them continue to work while the students were in the building, so their work hours were limited to before, after the school day or weekends and breaks.
Okay. Is this just for ceiling tile removal? Is it for?
It's for ceiling tile removal and replacement and any abatement that would be required as well. And flooring, there's some flooring removal and replacement as well.
Duct floor as well?
Yes.
For ceiling?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes, I know you've seen that both, pretty much that they can do it. I did notice that with the Morton, in phase two, in alternate two, they have demolition of 30 days, that there's going to take them.
That's what he had put in his bid documents, and then when we spoke with him and he spoke to him today, he said that it would be, I believe, six weeks from, from one phase and then six weeks for the second phase, so a total of 12 weeks.
It seemed like from the first word about this, we were talking something like eight weeks, six to eight weeks, or 12. What's happened in between?
I don't know.
It's a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, basic. It's kind of slow, but I'm not trying to take it. So, I don't want to say it's more six days. I think the interesting part is if we can get students back at the school. I think it's interesting, you know, if we can get students back to school in three weeks, well, that may begin to alleviate the burden of what's going on, so, I mean, that's great. You know, and obviously, we'd like to get it done in two months and it's done. I think that'd be.
Correct. And, and the contractor that had proposed doing all the demolition at once and then turning it, and then doing this work as well to complete those shop areas, also said that he would be able to turn over areas as he goes along for phase two.
We haven't sensed why the difference in bids. I mean, we haven't sensed that, and the base bids are 752 versus 976.
No, when we spoke them, it seemed like both contractors had included all the work that was in the contract documents.
Would you help with the contract?
We, RGB feels confident with both contractors that they both have the experience to complete the work. We have worked with one previously. We have not worked with the other in, in the past. I did ask for some references and they were provided. I was able to contact one of the references today, and they did give a very positive recommendation.
So, alternate two was with the light fixtures. Alternate three is what?
No, alternate three was modifying some of the light fixtures to accompany a different ceiling environment. Option four was replacing those light fixtures with new.
Okay. And then what was two?
Two was the phasing of not letting them work once school was in session.
I found it, yeah. Which, I mean, my personal opinion is that I think it's $200,000 option. I mean, if they can do work safely, get people where it is to be, but it's not going to be night in school, I think everybody knows. That's not a, you know, that's.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's landing, I, but it.
So, the, so the phase two is, you know, we said, I mean, no one can work in the school for six days, so, I mean, that's 200,000. So, that option to 200,000 for this, this contract and then for the other contract is a less, option two, a much higher base price.
Right.
It's still a cost, you know, pretty obvious. So, my personal opinion is that 752,000, you know, contract, you can turn up to school in 60 days and phase two is back in the school.
Right. I mean, it's a million and a half less. Is that where you're going?
40 million, yeah. Just thought I could ask, is this, this money is that we're going to be using, is this kind of already planned aside for this renovation to take place all the way up?
Yeah, the ceiling replacement was part of the original plan that we put together when we took over the career tech. The cleanup portion was supposed to happen.
Just a very question, mine, is how much we had sucked away or we were expecting this to cost us?
Yeah, this was, well, it was around 800,000. That's what we were estimating, and right now, we have about 1.5 billion in our career tech account.
So, if we hadn't noticed, next summer, we'd be talking 800,000?
Uh, I'm sorry.
If we were doing this project next summer as we planned, we'd be doing this at, at a cost of 800,000, the way we had budgeted?
Well, yeah, I think, well, this, this, if, I mean, we're talking the bids, I think the one thing that we didn't plan for was the cleanup aspect. If we just did ceiling tile replacement, it wouldn't cost this. We had, had a combined thing here with both cleanup and ceiling tile replacement.
But we had, so we're talking about in terms of what we, we were gonna have to pay, that we didn't expect is some 300,000, so two to 300,000, but we were expecting 800,000.
Well, yes, for the ceiling. Yes, okay, yes.
Does he the contractor have any kind of clause if they can't meet the 60 days that they're penalized?
We didn't ask for that specifically. The substantial completion date, that was part of the bid documents, after that date is reached, there is a 500 dollar liquidated damages clause in this back.
500, a day or 500 a day?
500 a day.
Because there's also, you know, as you're putting the ceiling tiles, you have various ceiling tiles, but it's like really, you know, hobbled between the light fixtures, whatever. So, we have the option, alternate three is modifying to the light fixtures, and alternate four is replacing light fixtures and, you know, to fit whatever.
With new, yes.
You should have, as we can probably get rise money, national grid, we have a project for my side.
Yeah, so that's mainly, we didn't know.
We actually have participated in that for break tech, so we actually did get a lot of lights over the last year and installed them. These sections, there's a few sections that weren't done because of how the ceilings were set up there, so I feel pretty confident that we can go back to rise and, and kind of try to reopen that. I don't know if the lights are still available at this point. I don't know if the, if that deal is still going on, but it's certainly something we can look at, and, and again, we had the lights basically for free, and we only had to pay for it to stall, so.
And how long was the process? Would it be, would it coincide with the work that is being done here?
Probably not, I would say, but then again, I would have to talk to them and see how they can give the fixtures to us and in our way to put them on.
It's just an option.
No, that would be great.
You should consider it.
Is there a motion? For a specific bid?
I moved to go with, um, I'm borrowing, and, um, not, the, the, before, before that, I'm sorry, I have one more question. So, just to make sure that I understand, in alternate two, we're talking about getting students back in class. How quickly in that one area?
I was gonna say approximately three weeks from when they mobilize.
Three weeks from when they mobilize, and then alternate one, it would be to complete 60 days.
Right, because we didn't, it wasn't requested to have a base bid. Oh, it's not alternate one. Base bid, sorry.
The base bid is, and the alternate one is phasing with workers working during the day. Alternate two is phasing with workers not working during the school day. There's no difference in price between the base bid and the phasing while the workers can work during the day, between base bid and alternate one. No change in price from either one there.
Right, but we would move students back from school immediately. We wouldn't say, you know, working the evening hours, we're going to move students next week. Right, that wouldn't be on plan. Right, our, our plan is still to start cleaning up, then we'll be moved once it's clean. So, there's no benefit making them work nights.
Yeah.
That's right. If we were to say, listen, you know what, we're moving these students back in tomorrow, you start cleaning tomorrow night, then it makes sense, you know, but I don't think it's a 200,000 option that makes sense.
We'll, we'll be moving people in as soon as we get the air quality test completed, as soon as that air quality test is completed in the past, we will be able to, at that point, begin moving students back into that section. And I also think that by having this phasing approach, not only will we be able to get the students in faster, we won't have an exodus in the end of this where we're gonna have to move everything back in at one time. We're gonna be able to kind of chip away at it as we go through the process. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to take the Viro Clean Bid for, I guess, alternate one and alternate three. Right, alternate three is the replacement.
Yeah, we're not allowed to be kind of price as good.
All right, so I'm just gonna do alternate one. All right. All right, so I'll make a motion for Viro Clean, alternate one. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Vice Chair Porche. Any further discussion? Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Please, Chair Porche.
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah.
And, and Maro clean alternate one. All right. Thank you.
Chair. Would you like to bring like a question for a second?
Um, we'll, we'll, we're gonna get the ball rolling right away. I'll be sure to issue the PO tomorrow morning first thing. And I'll also contact both vendors. I, I will set up a meeting as soon as possible with the Friday clean. We'll proceed from there.
So by the next meeting, we'd be working, right?
I would hope, yeah, I would hope so. Yes. Yes, they won't be working. Yes. Yes.
All right.
All right. Next, I'll make a motion for discussion approval on a title change for the special education administrator. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vice Chair Oj. Dr. Sullivan, do you want to explain this? So this is not just a title change, it's a change in duty?
No, actually. No. What happened is in order for somebody to be listed as a special education assistant director, RIDE requires them to have the special ed administrative certification.
Yeah.
We interviewed a number of applicants. Only one applicant had that certification and it was not somebody that we wanted for the position. But we did have several qualified applicants who are working on the certification. So what we would like to do is, I can talk to RIDE about this weekend, change the title. So give it a title other than special education assistant director, but keep it with exactly the same duties while that person continues to work on their special ed administrative certification.
Right.
And once they have that, we could change the name back, but we need to get somebody in that position.
Okay. And so then we can vote from one of the candidates that's already applied?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Does the title stay that way and they're replaced and they're certified?
No, I think in the future we should look to change it. Yeah. There's a, a very big shortage of special education administrators right now in the island.
Very much. All right. Dr. McGee, go first. Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Please, Chair Porche.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And the motion is approved. To the superintendent, Senator Gignan.
So I wanted to share with the school here a attendance campaign we've started here in Wansaket. Hopefully here, student attendance campaign. I just wanted to share with you what that campaign is going to look like. What we've done so far and what we're planning to do to continue in the school year. So the goal in Wansaket, and then I shared this, I shared the data with the committee last meeting through my report, which, which showed that student chronic absence in Wansaket is extremely high. I presented you the data for September, which basically shows you any student, all students that have an absence two or four days for September. And that projects a continued, those numbers, of course, in school year, that we need to provide the absent students. So we, we have an issue, major issue, crisis in Wansaket. And I would say that this is also a national crisis. It's not unique to Wansaket. It's not unique to just urban districts, although there tends to be a higher concentration of chronic absent students in the urban districts where pride increases and those are around, issues of poverty, things like that. So as a, as a district, I felt that although we've been working hard over the last couple of years to try to increase our average day attendance and decrease our chronic student absence, I felt as though we needed to go a step beyond that in establishing a meeting that was out into the community. So we started, this year we started with a district press release which I issued on September 27th. I also, myself and... So we started with a district press release which was issued on September 27th. We've also been creating short videos. I created one with principals, teachers, staff, students in some of our schools. Have created these short videos which are going to be sent out via to the super principals immediately. Info emails that they send to, to families and parents. It's also going to be the district website that those videos are going to be shown on as well as the school websites. And this is back, we have news releases and then radio visits that all of them are. WO men were discussing the campaign also going to plan, since it's tied with other RIDE to let them know and the community know of what's happening in respect to the campaign. And it's not just letting people know that we have a campaign that's educating the community, but will be important to students coming to school every day. We're creating a tri-fold flyer that we'll be sending home with students. Plus, the district will also be providing those flyers at each of our schools to the parents, to the members coming in. That flyer is going to basically outline the importance of students coming to school. It's to share with the data also with parents and to provide parents also with tips that will make it hopefully a little easier to get students to school on a daily basis. We're also going to visit the different community centers, reaching out to the various churches in the community as well as some of the community centers. So that we can go out there with administrators and meet with the parents and explain to parents what exactly it means and why their children need going to school every day and what being absent just two days a month can do for a child. And how it can, you know, definitely prevent them from being successful as they, as they could be otherwise being. So that's, that's a basic overview of what the campaign is. And as I said, we started, we started the videos I've sent home in the school messenger platform. The video of myself explaining the program, the importance of the attendance, daily attendance, as well as a letter that was sent home. And the principals finishing theirs, their videos out. We have just two left. Once they are finished, they'll go on the websites, they'll send them to their specific parents. Want to personalize it through the school so that parents and students see their teachers and their administrator. So we've got a lot of work cut out. I think we've got a lot to try to make this situation a better situation. But to a certain degree, there is only so much that teachers and administrators in the school department can do. We're very hard reaching out to parents and trying to provide support and not make it punitive when they honestly aren't coming to school. But try to help them so that they can make sure that their children are ready.
Does any school committee member wish to comment on the superintendent's report? Mr. Lee?
I would just like to commend the office. I know I think that's a very impactful, very motivating period with my head up to the top.
My understanding is we have a YouTube channel now. We can post videos on this. All right. I'll make a motion to receive and place and file the superintendent's report. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Vice Chair Porche. All committees here, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
I propose to have it. The school committee good and well fair, Ms. Gonzalez. Uh, Ms. Tuna?
So a couple of things. One is, they're both kind of related. I was at recess rocks and I thought it was just a fantastic day seeing the kids. They have to be recessed, you know, play tag, you know. I forget who the recess coordinator was, the adults, but John, but he was schooling all of the elementary kids in wall ball. So I think he has way too much time on his hands to be so proficient at wall ball. And then yesterday morning, we were at the healthy schools breakfast for Rhode Island. And, you know, a couple of things that they continued, or one of the themes that they emphasized that, you know, carried over from the recess rocks is really the importance of physical activity throughout the day to help kids learn. Even if it's just like a couple of minute, you know, activity that gets you exercising and then calm down. It really helps, helps the learning process. So just wanted to, you know, encourage everybody to get active because apparently it has a very strong correlation to, you know, learning. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, speaking, looking at the year program, I guess one of the issues that, or one of the challenges we're going to be having is to get parents in high school involved. And I know that PTO is not being very active in the last few years. I think that's a fact that we're going to have to be involved to try to get that up and running. Because it was active at one point and it's not no longer, but we need to really get a little more on this and find ways, creative ways to get it together. Don't like, you know, get the kids together alone with their parents because schools that have the PTOs, attendance becomes less and less of a problem. But I think this is one of the areas that we're gonna have to think in. And I don't think it's gonna be easy. However, I think this is one of the areas that we're gonna need to focus on. Secondly, I'm very proud of the Wansaket middle school band as well as the Wansaket high school band. Did a fantastic job this past Monday at the Water Fest Parade. It was wonderful to see them in the viewing stand as they marched by. There was a lot of pride. There was a lot of spirit. There was a lot of knowing spirit. And so it was wonderful to see. So I congratulate all our students and all, all the adults that work with them. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:46. But I should make my Mr. Lee, second, Mr. Vice Chair Porche. All committees here, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
I propose to have it. Meeting adjourned.